Welcome to the Seneca County Board of Supervisors Committee meetings for Tuesday, February 25th. First up is Health and Human Services Vice Chair Reynolds. You're in the hot seat tonight.
All right, Mr. [inaudible]. Uh, I guess we're gonna do it at the table. Just to get my [inaudible].
Yes, sir. They got three.
Okay, we'll call the Health and Human Services Committee together and number one, authorize an acceptance of New York State Department of Health endorsement grant.
Thank you. So this is a housekeeping grant we get annually from the state health department. We use it primarily to conduct underage compliance checks. You might think of them as stings, but we officially call them compliance checks. To check for, you know, retailers that might be selling to underage. We also do license and signage checks, conduct education campaigns and so forth. And the amount of the grant's the same as last cycle and there's no local match.
We use thirty thousand to do the...
Well, truthfully, this is a grant I have because there are so many restrictions on how we can spend the money. I don't spend all of this money annually. We use as much as we can. When I came here, we, the department was using a miniscule amount. For my days in Kyuga, I recalled that the state health department allowed us to bill five percent of every restaurant inspection. Because when your sanitarians are in a restaurant, they're supposed to be making sure that there's no smoking in the back kitchen, that type of thing. So we now bill five percent of every restaurant inspection against this grant to try to use more of the salary and fringe. So we've come up with some creative ways to use it. But truthfully, I don't know exactly how much we use annually, but we don't, unfortunately, one that we're not able to utilize entirely, but.
Any questions from anybody?
No.
Uh, want to get a motion and a second?
Second.
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Number two, authorize an acceptance of a New York State Department of Health Administration action grant.
So another housekeeping grant. It's an annual grant. We use the funds for this one to support the administration of our vaccines for children, or VFC clinic, and our vaccines for adult clinic, our VFA. Mostly what we give is routine childhood vaccinations to children who are, don't, don't have insurance. We also conduct education campaigns for both the public and we pay visits to providers' offices and so forth to keep them up to date on the latest. And again, this one's the same as, same amount as last year and there's no local match.
Support.
Second. First and second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Authorizing a contract for New York State Department of Health for year four of the Healthy Neighborhoods Preventive Health Cornerstone Grant.
Yeah, that's a, that's a mouthful. Yeah. So this is a fourth year of a five-year grant, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. We just refer to this as the Healthy Neighborhoods Program. So April first, or mark, mark the beginning of year four. Healthy Neighborhoods aims to reduce environmental hazards inside folks' homes, especially fire hazards, asthma triggers, trip and fall hazards, et cetera. We can provide lots of free stuff to, to residents. It's become a very popular program. It's done a lot of good. A lot of fire safety items, you know, carbon dioxide detectors, smoke detectors, whatnot. Baby gates, pillow and mattress covers, cleaning supplies, you name it. And it's essentially covers the whole county at this point. You know, you folks, this board had advocated for us to try to get the Seneca Falls zip code added in. We were able to do that here in the last year. And now we're actually, we're gonna hit all our targets for year three, a number of visits and revisits and so forth. And we're booking out through mid-April at this point, so it's become very popular.
Support.
Second. First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Authorizing acceptance of New York State Department of Health Performance Water Enhancement Grant to amend the 2025 public... Something new, that must be.
Well, we annually get the water enhancement grant, although I asked this board to pass a resolution late last year to advocate for an increase in funding. And the state did actually increase this one almost ten percent. So that's partly, you know, various counties advocating to the state, as well as our organization, NICE HO, the New York State Association of County Health Officials, so. And this is one we use every penny. This, you know, we use it to cover the cost of water samples that we take at regulated facilities. And that's everything from wineries and Mennonite schools to the large municipal water supplies in Waterloo, Seneca Falls, Ovid, and Interlake and so forth. We cover part of the salary and fringe for staff assigned to the program. And, you know, it's something we do here because we have an environmental health division. Counties without an environmental health don't regulate their own water supplies. They rely on the state, but we take care of our own, and so this grant helps us do that.
Does this still cost money to do a sample, or will it cover the cost of this enhancement?
Well...
If I come for, with a water sample, I still gotta pay, don't I?
Yeah, residents, so we offer a service to residents. We have a courier from a lab. I think we're using Pace Environmental Labs now because our former lab, well, went by the wayside. Let's put it that way. They weren't doing the job, but, so we have a new lab. We effectively act as the hold. Folks can bring us the water sample. We give them the water bottles. We instruct them how to take the samples. They bring them to us. They pay the fee. We don't mark them up at all. The courier comes here and picks it up. It's a nice service for residents. A lot of folks use it all the time. Regulated facilities sometimes have to take their own samples. They'll bring them to us and Pace will pick them up. They pay for those. This covers the cost of samples that we're required to take as the regulator to go out and take surveillance samples at various facilities and other costs.
Is there any guidelines on pH levels that's supposed to be in municipal water?
There are. I wouldn't know them off the top of my head, but...
Seven is neutral.
Right.
I know the water coming out of my tap is like three point four. It's the same as lemon juice. You know.
Well...
Acidic.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I'd have to look that up. I could ask Mary Jump to take a look into that if you want. I know, I mean, all of our municipal water supplies are within tolerance, and that's something that Mary and her staff keep very close tabs on. And of course, you know, in Waterloo, Jim Bromka, he and his staff keep tabs on those things. If they were out of compliance on a major parameter...
Water plant?
Pardon, pardon me?
Seneca Falls Water Plant, keep tabs on that?
Uh, well, we regulate Seneca Falls Water Treatment Plant as well. Yep, and they, you know, all those water supply operators are required to, you know, they have all sorts of hoops and requirements. They have to jump through and take their own, yep. They sample daily, the chlorine in the system and so forth. You know, off the top of my head, Waterloo, I think, has to take eight surveillance samples on their own every month at various points in the distribution system just to test, make sure there's no bacteria in the distribution system and so forth. Depends on the size of the water system and whatnot.
I used to work all over the country and couldn't wait to get home and have a cold glass of water out of the tap. Now it tastes like I'm drinking Clorox out of a Galvanix pail, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, some municipalities do have taste and odor issues. Typically, they don't, typically those things don't rate as a violation. They're more of a nuisance. Yeah.
Bacteria.
Especially sometimes when lakes turn over and so forth, but.
Support.
Yes, all, all in favor? First and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Authorizing contracts with Office of Aging. There we are.
Okay, so these are just the same contracts that we have every year. They're with two home care agencies to provide in-home services for our seniors, legal assistance to help our seniors with wills, powers of attorneys, stuff like that. And then our local senior center, we actually contract them for three services, transportation, recreation, and then health promotion.
Support.
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Authorization for Division of Chemical Services to enter into contracts for 2025.
Hello. So, there's several contracts, probably fifty to seventy-five contracts that we enter into for foster care, APS services, other county departments that provide services, as well as any foster care placement. We need to have contracts in place and just child welfare services. And I'm just asking, would the county attorney's approval and review of the contracts, making sure everything is in place, rather than have to bring each individual contract before if the... Well, yeah, I mean, we're in the process now, and as long as the county attorney signs off and approves, as well as the insurance office to make sure the county's protected for any liability. I would just ask if we may be able to do that.
Support.
First and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. The, one thing I forgot to, so if it's already in the budget, but if it's a contract that we have to go in that's not already adopted in the budget, I would certainly bring those forward for your review and approval before we entered into that. So this is just for what's already in the budget with contracts that are already there.
Would you be able, when we do the formal motion with the board, would you be able to provide a supplemental sheet that lists the vendor, the contract amount?
Sure.
And the purpose?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Reynolds. It'd be nice to add the grant totals in here as well. The grant totals, or, yeah, what they would tell you?
So we... So we could, like, one of the examples is we, we have people sometimes that we have to pay for their burials. So they may be from Buffalo or Rochester or whatever, so, so we do have those contracts in place. There's no dollar value at this point. It's just that we only pay them what the county rate is within the contract, up to whatever that amount is. And funeral homes can only receive so much of a state or county rate, so wouldn't exceed that. And there is reimbursement, but if they happen to be Medicaid, then that's, that's paid through Medicaid. But those are some of the different contracts that you won't find in the line item budget, but it's, it's a responsibility that we have. But certainly, any that are in the budget, we can outline.
Is that okay? Good for that. All right.
Thank you.
No business? No business? I think I'm done, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well, you guys can stay here and wait for Frank.
Agriculture and Environmental Affairs is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one issue on here, appointing a new agricultural business representative and reappointing a farmer representative of Seneca County Agriculture Enhancement Board. And it's, Peter DeClos is hereby de-clue. Removed from the Agricultural Enhancement Board. And Isaiah Winters is appointed to Agricultural Enhancement Board. And Doug Fryer is reappointed to the Agricultural Enhancement Board for a three-year term commencing immediately. Any questions?
He said it all.
Support.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's, I just wanted to mention that we had a, oh, talking with Scott King. They had a hydrilla treatment meeting and the DEC decided to treat the hydrilla in Aurora and not treat the hydrilla in Sheldrake. Which really doesn't make a lot of sense, but they said they didn't have the funding for it. They're like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the treatment. So I'm gonna try to persuade our state representatives to see if they can come up with the money to treat that. If we, if we let that hydrilla get away from us, it's gonna be a pretty ugly situation. It grows an inch a day, up to thirty feet deep.
Maybe we should write a letter.
We're gonna get a letter out. That's, I believe that's all we have. Committee's closed.
Thank you. Next up, Supervisor Hayes, Water and Sewer Treatment Management Operations.
Move these desks closer, that's funny. A little tough to get it out of, you know. I'd like to...
Welcome back.
Welcome back to you. What do you mean, welcome back?
Water Sewer Management Operations to order. First issue, Daniel?
Yes, so not a lot to say about this one. We, the county received requests to grant an easement to allow the town of Seneca Falls and the village of Waterloo to make an emergency connection across the two parcels. The one to Peroneo Drive and then the, the Bonadette Drive.
This is for water?
This is for water, yes, sir.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Senate County Water and Sewer Authority Appointments.
So move.
I'll tell you, be a second.
Okay, and the final one is moving along the four fourteen manhole restoration project.
Well, well, wait, Senate County Water Sewer Authority.
They're there.
I do not.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Request bids for Route four fourteen sewer water manhole rehab.
Aye.
Second.
Uh, so again, yeah, this is just a project that's been sort of on the to-do list for quite some time. Hunt Engineer has gone out, reevaluated, updated the list of what's necessary, provided us, you know, updated documentation and cost estimates. And so this is just the first step in trying to move that project along.
Is the idea that that would be awarded and done this year, or?
Uh, yeah, so the goal was, they may be a little bit behind, but, you know, sort of go out to bid over the winter and then get us on schedule to sort of for a summer project start.
So what is, what is the plan to fix these right now? Because in Waterloo, we had to fix a hundred and fifty-one manholes, and then we ended up lining them with a product, and it ended up saving a million and a half dollars. And the treatment was, basically, they gave a ten-year warranty on each manhole that they guaranteed when they lined it. So, moving forward...
That's right.
Yeah. Is that, is that what we're doing?
We're doing all the whole thing, not a phase one to it.
Right, okay.
There is some that have to be relined.
Mm-hmm.
And some, there's a...
Are gone.
Replace.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, unfortunately, the number's much smaller. So there's twenty-four manholes, sixteen of them need attention. One is a complete replacement, fifteen are rehabbed, and so that's fifteen relines and one, and four receive new frames and covers.
Okay, the reason I mention it is because there was only one company that, when we went out, that actually had this product that was guaranteeing it for ten years. And the second one that even made the attempt was a million higher than that one. I have that number. Do you guys, are you familiar with this contractor that does this?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll reach out, or my account clerk will reach out and give you that number, you know, just to see where that might fall into this as far as, you know, saving the county money.
Okay, so part of what Hunt provided us were some sort of cost estimates based on other projects that were granted in the area. Hopefully, those are in line with the numbers you provide as well.
Okay, very good.
Are these all brick manholes?
Uh, they're concrete cast, so they're, they're relatively new.
They're brick?
Concrete.
Concrete.
I'm wondering what you would reline in a concrete manhole.
Well, I mean, the concrete deteriorates so far, you know, through whatever gas, whatever's in there.
Yeah, there's...
Yeah, and it just...
On the water level.
Ours, ours had fallen apart so bad, and the sewer was put in less than thirty years ago. And, you know, it was, not a bioxide, but, I don't know, it's got a technical term to it. And it had just fallen apart and it ate our pump stations. So every time a chunk of concrete went off, it blew up a pump station, right? So it blew up every one of them the first year I took over as supervisor. It was a lot of fun.
Is it like a composite?
It's a composite, and it's about that thick, and then it's foam, and then composite again, and they stamp it. And then that's where you get your ten-year warranty. So they guarantee, basically, that if that doesn't work, they'll replace the manhole for free. And they were the only people that were even in that game, so I'll definitely provide you, make sure that we have that number because it saved an insane amount of money. So we're moving forward.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any other, wait a minute, did I miss one?
No, we have... I didn't realize we had five hours tonight. Thank God.
Dave, any update on your water plant?
Uh, the update is, is the state has twenty more days to pay up the bill or take over the water plant. They were given thirty, and today we got a phone call that...
It might be promising, but they got twenty days.
Our days are going to...
Twenty-one days. It's gonna be the state, right?
Just luck with that.
Well, I was, I was, good luck with it. It's not me. It's the state of New York. It's good luck with it. They'll bid it all for a million dollars a year. We'll take the contract for a million dollars a year. Thank you very much. It's your tax dollars, not mine.
I like that attitude.
Anyways, any other new business?
Nope. Chairman, we're done.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Ways and Means, Supervisor Brownell.
I think so.
Yeah, don't forget that. You need that.
All the Ways and Meanings, Ways and Means can be ordered. I have one issue tonight. Authorize amendments to the 2024 Seneca County Budget.
Support. Second.
Questions?
Is this just a housekeeping thing for the... Okay. I was just, because it's twenty twenty-four, and I saw, I first saw a contingency taking the money. I was like, what are we doing? But then I see it's for twenty twenty-four, so I just, it's just a housekeeping? For twenty-four, correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions? Wrong favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? If not, stand adjourned.
Thank you. Next up is Public Works Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we'll call the Public Works Committee to Order. As soon as they come up. Okay, issue number one, authorize an agreement with Stark Tech for generator, boiler, and HVAC services.
Support.
This is going to need an amendment. On the first resolved, we are changing the dollar amount from sixty-one thousand, three, two, four, to forty-six thousand, four, two, zero. Would you like to talk on that, Bob, real quick?
Uh, yeah, so the Stark Tech, they've now combined a lot of their services. So Emergency Power Systems, Buck Pitt, and Kissler have all merged into one company. So the, these three companies, they take, they take care of five of our sites for HVAC and generator and boilers. So the contract, the first resolved there, the sixty-one thousand that was in there, after Sierra and I sat down and went through these contracts, we noticed that there was quite a bit of a difference in what we were adding up and what they had on paper. I made a couple of phone calls and found out that they actually had submitted a boiler, boys, boiler for the Highway Department, and that's what raised that amount up, so.
Okay.
I got on the horn and made sure that they got that straightened out.
Support for the amendment.
Thank you.
I got a question on it.
Yeah.
What if, like, our town joined it with all our stuff? Would that, I mean, if we pay our share, I mean, would that be better if...
Um, that's something we could, we could look into. I mean, I'd be more than happy to make that, that phone call, make, have that question thrown out there. I'm sure that it would come in at a lower cost if, you know, like, if your, if your township were to do it and we were to join jointly together, I'm sure that that cost would be a lower cost than what it would be if they were singular contracts. So I can look into that if you'd like, Frank.
Yeah, I think we should. I mean, we can save and you can save. Everybody'd be happy.
So there's a motion on the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, uh...
I'm sorry, and this is, this is just a one-year contract, so, you know, if we come up with that, you know, that phone call we make, if that changes things, then we can surely look at...
We can do it next year.
Next year, right.
Look into it, yeah.
Right, but I'll, I'll get started on this year, sure.
You can amend it at the regular meeting, too.
Yeah, we can amend.
You can change.
Well, it's gonna, they're gonna have to come out and take a look at equipment and know exactly what you've got to have serviced up. It'll take more than that.
Can I have a motion on the resolution as amended?
So move.
Motion.
Motion, second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Two, Board of Supervisors approved day automation yearly service contract.
Support.
Second, is there any discussion on this? This is just our yearly contract?
Yeah, this is a yearly contract. It's day automation. They do our air hand, or our air balancing. They do our, uh, allow the building egresses and stuff of that nature. We use them in all of our buildings. They're used in schools around here, too, as well, so. They're proprietary system, so it's, it's not, like, we can just change out.
Housekeeping.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Item three. Authorize going to bid for highway material for 2025.
Support.
Support.
Support, and second, is there any discussion on this?
This is yearly.
Yearly stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number four, you should have gotten this email to you. We are gonna have to make an amendment real quick on the price on this. This is the Board of Supervisors authorizes a purchase of two 2024 Navstar six thirteen ten-wheelers for the Highway Department. Well, the change, please, if you look at the resolved, we are changing the dollar amount to three, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, zero, five, eight, per vehicle for a total of six hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixteen. And we are changing the account number to five oh five, one, three, zero, dash, five, two, six, zero, zero. So the price just went up a few dollars from the resolution.
Second.
Motion and support. Is there any discussion on this? This kind of, I know, was a last-minute add-on, and Roy can explain where it came from.
Well, if you wait another day, it'll go up another thousand.
I know, I know.
What happened is I had the salesman come, and it's gonna be four years. They haven't even ordered the trucks last year that we've bought. And we got two thousand eight and ten trucks that are killing us in fixing, so. I went up to Ten Co last week and they had two of them there, so that's why.
That's the story.
I know Town of Fay up bought one in Town of Ovid. You were happy with them? We stopped at Fay out today. They seem to be happy.
Okay. And this is budgeted for 2025 also.
Yeah, it's in the budget. It's under... Yeah, it sits in the budget. It's under the budget.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any old business for Public Works? Is there any new business for Public Works? Hearing none, Public Works is adjourned, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Public Safety and Criminal Justice Supervisor Brownell.
Yep.
Gotta go.
Wow, we got a lot to talk about, baby.
All the Public Safety and Criminal Justice. To order. First issue, Board of Supervisors authorize the housing of incarcerated individuals for other counties as part of an intermunicipal agreement.
Support.
Go ahead, Chair.
Uh, thank you, sir. I discovered that we've never actually charged outside counties for housing of incarcerated individuals. We've usually, usually done it in some sort of, uh, agreement, housed one for them, and they would house one for us. Uh, in this scenario, this will allow us the ability to have a contract with each county and charge them at a daily rate.
Any questions?
Sounds good. We've never charged them before, and now we're gonna start charging them. I like that.
We charge.
All in favor?
But not outside counties.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Number two, Board of Supervisors authorize a contingent leasing of office space for the County of Seneca Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions?
Not really.
This is for a dollar pressure.
It's a dollar a year, yeah.
Yes, renewing what you've been.
Yep, and they've asked, uh, for us to maintain a presence out there, and, um, it's, the lease ran out, and we're just looking to renew. They're asking for us to renew the lease for three years.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Board of Supervisors authorize County Sheriff Department to apply for the two thousand twenty-five New York State Canal Corporation grant for, uh.
Support. Second.
Motion made and, uh, seconded. Go ahead, Chair.
Just an annual grant, uh, twenty-five percent match. Funds are budgeted, and, uh, this enables us to continue our marine patrol. Um, and it pays for staffing and equipment.
Have we ever gotten this grant before?
Uh, we have applied for it in the past, yes.
Have we been awarded it, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We may not always take advantage of the funding, but, uh, we have, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Excuse me. Number five, Board of Supervisors authorize intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Seneca Falls for the purpose of joint emergency response team.
Support. Second.
Uh, the Sheriff's Office has had an emergency response team on and off for the twenty years that I've been there. Um, we, I've had conversations with Chief Snyder in Seneca Falls about a joint, uh, emergency response team, and, um, they've indicated that they are interested in pursuing this. Um, in our view, that this would, uh, provide more shared services, uh, help with efficient utilization of police services and resources, um, cooperative, uh, law enforcement, uh, between agencies, and this is at no cost to the county.
And the comptroller loves it.
Does he? Good.
Oh, absolutely.
This does open us up to more grants.
Yep.
Um, once we establish this.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Mr. Chairman, I think, uh, you may have missed four.
I missed, missed four. Okay, thank you. Board of Supervisors authorize Deputy Sheriff Sankey to attend the drug rec.
Support. Second.
Uh, this is just staying in line with the out-of-county, or I'm sorry, out-of-state travel, uh, requirement for county employees. It's grant-funded, and it, uh, will allow a deputy sheriff to pursue the drug recognition expert training. Uh, the, the field exercises are taking place in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. All lodging is at no charge of the county, and meals and salary are also reimbursed.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Number six, Board of Supervisors accept FY two thousand twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPD.
Support. Second.
Hi, uh, so this is a twenty twenty-four Emergency Management Performance Grant. We receive this every year, um, and have been for over twenty-five years, uh, and it goes towards our salaries in emergency management. There's no local match.
Any questions?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Carried. Number seven, Board of Supervisors accept FY twenty-four State Homeland Security Program.
Support. Second.
Uh, so this is a State Homeland Security Grant Program. It's also S L E T P P, um, which goes to the Sheriff's Office, which is Law Enfor, State Law Enforcement Terrorism Prevention Program. Thirty-five percent of the grant, which is seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, goes towards law enforcement terrorism prevention activities. Uh, so for them, they pay for sixteen months of internet for, uh, their vehicles, law enforcement vehicles. Um, there's no local match to this grant. Um, we also have funding in here for, um, computers and, um, E O C software.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number eight, Board of Supervisors accept FY twenty-two thousand twenty-three Domestic Terror, Terrorism Prevention.
Support. Second.
So this is a newer grant that we just started receiving. Um, every county in New York State receives it. It's a hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars that goes towards domestic terrorism prevention, uh, for the county. And so my office, along with Margaret Morrison, Mental Health, and the Sheriff, um, uh, worked together and, um, with a group of individuals and, and agencies and organizations throughout the county in a group called Scentac, which is the Seneca County, um, Terrorism Assessment Committee. And it basically, um, this funding, there's no local match to it, and what it is, is, uh, it's for terrorism prevention through, um, like, activities of trying to determine, um, we all, we all meet together and kind of come up with, like, uh, targeted areas that we want to focus on. For this specific grant, um, we are potentially looking to, and I think the, the Sheriff's gonna focus on that. Um, Homeland Security said the best use of these funds is to actually hire, um, someone to administer this entire program. So with grant funding, like sole, sole grant, grant funding, so it wouldn't cost anything to the county. It'd be all grant funding. So that's something that we'll be looking to do with this grant. It's a three-year grant.
Any questions?
Whoever says no, we should be looking into.
You'll get on the list. There is no list.
Carried. Any unfinished business? Any new business? We're adjourned.
Thank you. Next up is Human Resources and Government Operations Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, we'll call the Human Resources Government Operations Committee to order. Issue number one of, on February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, vacancy approved the following positions. County Airport was a refill building, uh, maintenance mechanic. D H S Refill Coordinator of Child Support Enforcement. D H S Refill Support Investigator, Mental Health Refill, uh, Mental Health Clinical Therapist. Mental Health Reclassify Psychiatric Social Worker to Psychiatric Social Worker Two. Mental Health Create Two Peer Advocate Positions, and the Sheriff Refilled Corrections Officers. These are all committee-only approval. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two. Board Creation and Filling of Two Full-Time Peer Advocate Positions Within the Mental Health Department. Are you?
These are grant-funded positions that Margaret's received.
There's a, uh, is there a motion?
So move.
A motion and second. Do either you or Margaret want to speak on this, or? I think, I mean, they're, they're grant-funded, correct? Okay. Is there any, any questions?
Be a Reinhardt.
Go ahead.
So do these end when the grants are gone? I, I can't catch a break today.
No. It's a great question. Um, uh, yes, they can end. However, I would come to this committee and request that we continue them likely because these are, um, significant revenue generators, these particular positions.
But it would be a conscious decision, not just a?
No, I would come to the board and say the grants ended, and.
Gotcha.
Can we continue it?
Thank you.
And then provide you with the evidence of.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, Board Supervisors approve reclassification of psychiatric social worker to psychiatric social worker two in the Mental Health Department.
So move.
Second.
So in order to treat, uh, Medicare patients, you have to have, um, a different credential. And when our staff receive the appropriate levels of supervision and experience, take an exam, and increase, uh, their, um, they, they receive the C certification as social workers. It allows them to see Medicare patients. It enhances our ability to reimburse for services. So we provide them with the opportunity to make, um, a little more money at the psychiatric social worker two level. So we're asking that that happen, because we had a, a person who, um, achieved that.
Margaret, just one question. Not, so, so you won't have to come back up, so it's not necessarily about this. But have you seen, have any of your grants been frozen or payments not happened?
Not, not yet.
Okay.
Nope.
You will alert us if that happens?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, revising policy number one oh one point five oh three on the job incidents.
This is housekeeping. Um, it's a best practice to keep the accident incident reports that we get with the Risk Management Office. So we've taken out the, uh, the language about each department keeping their own copies. It really belongs with risk management.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any old business for H R G O?
We just have this, right?
Got this coming in. And, uh, I have one item under new business, and I apologize, I didn't get it in for the resolution. It's, uh, basically amending the Seneca County Management Handbook regarding flex time, and we are only changing that instead of ninety days to use it, they have thirty days to use it.
So moved.
Second.
So one question. So it's, it's, uh, crossed out, deleted. If you are unable to use flex time within that period, you may make a request. So what happens if, I, I don't want to assume that if I can't use it in that thirty days, I just lose it, or?
Well, that's the same way it is in ninety days.
Right.
So it, they're just changing thirty to ninety, so if they couldn't, if they cannot use it within thirty days, then they can make the request to go longer on it.
But on mine, that's crossed out. It says the crossed out part.
Right.
The ability to use flex and go to the county managers is crossed out. Is that not supposed to be crossed?
I think that got crossed out because they're changing the ninety days to thirty days.
All right, so it's really just ninety to thirty in both spots?
Is that correct, or do we? Where'd it go? No.
I think that's up to you. I, uh, point of that is, I don't want people to just use that if they're too old.
Right. The flip of that is, I don't think it's fair if it can't. The, I guess the, um, the, I don't want to say, the default should be, I get that time then. Otherwise, management could just deny, 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 now someone is screwed out of their time.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I don't think there's gonna be, I, I would agree if we changed that to, if they can't use it in thirty days, they can ask. But.
Right.
Just like anything else, it's, it's the discretion of whomever, whether it gets extended.
But at least it gives me the opportunity versus no opportunity.
That's fine. So, uh, is there a motion to amend?
So move.
The resolution, uh, to add that back with changing ninety days to thirty days?
So move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any further discussion regarding this resolution? Hearing none of a motion for the resolution as amended.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody else have any new business for this committee?
Is the employee handbook almost done?
I hope so.
Okay.
Well, and, and one thing I did want to say is, you know, a lot of these things, we keep getting these amendments to.
It's good.
Going through and, and updating our policies to make sure that we're current with what we need to be.
And I didn't, that was not meant as a, oh, my God, one more amendment. It was meant as a, just curious as how much.
Yeah, there's, I have a list of things that we need to talk in committee at some point, um, rather than piecemeal, bringing them up every meeting, so.
That's fine, okay. Thanks.
H R G O is adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up is Economic Development, Tourism, and Housing Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Yes, Chairman.
Finally. Finally, this is.
That would be under, that's number one, right, Amanda? That's number one. Okay, we'll call the Economic Development, Tourism, and Housing Committees to order. Our first issue is the Seneca County Tourism and, uh, a request for the Seneca County Tourism Promotion Development Grant Funds for the Inter-Laken Community Action Group for Inter-Laken Old Home Days. Welcome.
My name is Meg Jastron and Gary Hunt. We're representing Inter-Laken Community Action Group, which is a newly formed, uh, five oh one three C corporation. And we submitted an application to you for our annual gathering in June, which we have fireworks planned for Friday night, family-friendly fireworks with a band, and a cornhole tournament, and then the next day, we have our, um, parade and festival, which will also include, uh, this, a type of reunion, which this is what Old Home Days used to be, a reunion for graduates of the area, and we are going to try to rekindle that idea.
That's good.
Get people back. So we were asking, uh, we are saying that we are drawing from outside the county on that basis, and the cornhole tournament is run by a group that is not even from our county, but they are willing to come and run this tournament, so they will bring their members in. And we're going, I guess we were asked how we would know. We're gonna have people going through the crowd, asking people about their, um, whether they're enjoying it and where are they from.
Where they're from. Meg, do you know, um, what kind of advertising do you do outside of?
Well, the Finger Lakes Times will have an ad. We'll also have it in the shopper, which is pretty broad, and, uh, posters. And then Facebook is a big one.
That works, yeah. I, I would just suggest you might also want to touch base with the Chamber, uh, the Tourism Promotion Agency, Jeff Shipley.
Yes.
See if they can put it on their site.
We are also going to have, uh, the Rose Hill Mansion is gonna come and have a table, advertise their business, and we're gonna have another table that has any brochures from our local businesses that are provided, so people can pick them up.
Any questions, Meg?
Any kind of a financials, brother, how much does it cost them to do this, and what are we?
They're asking for thirty-five hundred dollars.
What's the cost of it?
What's our, what's our guideline? On that?
The whole, the whole event is seven thousand, about, but the fireworks alone are twenty-five hundred dollars. And then we have to rent porta-potties.
Oh, yeah.
Pay for road closures, signs, and things like that.
Curious, is there any other municipal contribution, or?
From the village, yes.
Okay.
They contribute to our group.
Okay.
And annually. And annually.
Local businesses.
And we, right, we go to the local businesses and ask for their help.
Because that helps, and that's one of the questions on the form. Yeah, that's helpful. So, Ernie, did you have questions or?
Okay.
Yeah, what's, what's our guidelines say for this? We have guidelines.
Yes, so I, as far as, as I read it, it meets the guidelines.
There's also limits on amounts.
Right, it's up to $5,000, up to $10,000 if it's a municipal, or there's a municipal contribution.
Okay. I, I thought it was 2,500, sorry. I could be wrong.
Yeah, I thought it was 2,500 too.
I thought it was five.
I thought it was five.
Yeah, I thought it was five. I, yeah.
How far has the chairman updated it?
Yeah, because we support the FAD Historical Society, and that we gave them 10 because there was a matching contribution from the municipality of 10. And we can exceed even the guidelines if there's an actual reason to do it.
Okay, my copy may be old.
I don't, my copy's new.
I think this is a very worthwhile cause.
Yeah, I think so.
So.
Luke, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't have a motion, my bad. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, good luck.
Thank you.
Issue two, authorize a snowmobile trail grant applications and signing agreements with Twin Lakes Snowmobile Association and Seneca Sliders Snowmobile Association. Is this the same group that's done it in the past?
This is, yes, we do this annually, so.
Yeah, it's a pass-through.
Yeah. I'd also request, I just noticed that, because we do have to send these resolutions along with the grant application, that the third resolve include that the chairman of the board is authorized to sign the application.
I think, as the acting county manager, I think it's the, I think we're okay. Or does, do you actually, do you actually need two signatures or?
No, I need one signature. I just want to make sure if they're, if we, are we?
We're good, because I think all the other things we passed tonight have just said county manager. So we're good, right?
Fine. Okay.
Are we?
I mean, I, I've signed it as chairman of the board, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we're, I think, but good catch.
Okay.
My copy says both, has both headings.
It's the third resolve.
Oh, the third one, yeah. Mine just has, yeah, just has county manager.
Okay.
Okay. Um, motion? Second.
Second.
Questions, any other questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Issue three, authorize grant application for redevelopment plan for the Village of Ovid. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, thanks. So this actually refers to email that I sent you folks today. This is one of the grants that Jill and Dan have been working on. So Jill, you want to give a quick?
Yeah, actually, you know, after the fire, a bunch of departments, including the IDA, you know, started to come together and try and figure out what opportunities there might be for grant funding, for redevelopment efforts. And the IDA actually brought this to our attention. The planning then, you know, met with Empire State Development, and it does appear that this is a program that fits the needs of the community. So it would, basically, we could do either a strategic planning or a feasibility study for the site, or even a little beyond the site where there's other vacant property, where there was also a fire, and try and figure out the feasibility of redeveloping it, looking at potentially what are some of the infrastructure issues, what are some of the funding issues, coordinating with property owners or private developers to do that. So it is for up to about $100,000 grant, but there is a $50,000 match, and there is that funding in the planning department. And it's been suggested that, that that might be good use for that funding.
And Jill, right, this is what you asked us for, a letter of intent before that we were discussing in January, I think?
No, that's, that's the infrastructure one that comes later.
Oh, that's the grant, okay.
So this one is to cover like engineering and design fees?
It's, it's actually a little more pre-development, so it's like somebody coming in and really assessing what the current situation is, and potentially outlining some of the, basically, hurdles that the site may have, and some of the funding opportunities that might be either available to the property owners or other developers, whether it be private or nonprofit, to come in and start pursuing. So it's really, it's sort of step one, and sort of these planning process kind of grants. So after we get this, we'd get some recommendations on how to potentially move forward, and that's when we could probably more likely identify more specifics about what a project would look like.
So this would include design and projected costs?
Potentially, yes. Yeah, there would be probably some estimates in there about if we're going to move forward, this is what it would look like, and where are some of the funding sources for that type and?
And is there, so the county, the state, county will pay 50K, and then the state matches it?
Yes.
Is there, what do we have, what insurance, or do we want to, attention, how do we get insurance from the properties owners in the village that are behind it?
Well, there, there will be a component of the grant application where there needs to be some level of a notification, or like a, a understanding from the property owner that this is being pursued, and that's part of a discussion that we're currently having. So we kind of started putting this together in the past two weeks. So here's the, this is for the approval for us to go ahead and attempt the application. Also, that the planning department would prepare the application and ultimately assist with the administration of the grant, coordinating with the village and property owners.
Got you. So it's assumed that they, the owners of the property, the owners of the businesses do want to rebuild and are looking forward to some sort of insights from this?
Well, there's not necessarily the assumption that they all want to. There's the assumption that, that the, that there is a desire to redevelop the site. And if it turns out that there are property owners who wish to not, that they're, it's not financially feasible for them, that, that would be worked into this component. So there could be property owners that do want to, and then there would be portions of the site that property owners are not. So what could we be doing here to sort of bring the site together with its all, the different complications, and move forward on a redevelopment effort?
Right, Luke, that's a great question. This is one of the things that we have shared with, that subcommittee that I mentioned in the email has shared with the owners. No one has said, you know, outright no. I wouldn't say anyone has said outright yes, but no one has said outright no, yeah.
So, and almost, a little bit, we're sort of pushing it along and hoping that they'll have an interest in, at least looking at the data and potentially moving forward with the package this or?
Yeah, because if, and Jill, tell me if I'm wrong, but even if, well, even if they all, well, if somebody said no, it doesn't necessarily change the plan for redeveloping the village, per se, because it does extend beyond just the immediate fire.
Right, I mean, it'll also touch on issues of the infrastructure, whether it be road, sewer, water, different challenges that the site has.
What are the problems with the water lines?
Yeah, that's, and I apologize, there was another grant that Dan and Jill are working on that, there's, there's a lot of stuff happening.
Are we overstepping the bounds of the village?
I don't think so, because the, as I-
I don't want to think so. I think it's up to them to make all their decisions.
Well, no, but, so if you read my email, the supervisor, Borst, and Mayor Rosen are on the committee that's working with us on this.
But this is a village trustee, the village mayor and trustees are the one that's control of everything, right? That's where the fire was. It wasn't in the town or anything, it was in the village.
Right, but the village is in the town. But, but Ernie, as I said, there's a trustee and there's, the mayor is on the committee.
Right.
Okay.
But are we interfering, or can we cause by pushing our noses and doing things?
The mayor has asked us for help. I don't know what else to say.
So we're taking tax meters money to, to help them?
Well, they pay taxes. The businesses that were destroyed pay $20,000 a year.
Next time it's a fire or somebody, or somebody burns out, I go to-
Isn't, isn't that the role of the county to help the municipalities? Isn't that the role of the county to help the municipalities underneath it?
I guess I just want to make sure we're not preventing them from getting something that, you know?
Well, I guess, I-
They should follow the thing all the way through, so.
I appreciate the concern, but they have specifically reached out to us for help.
In writing or visible?
I'm sorry?
Have they written a letter asking that, or?
Well, I've had, I've had three meetings with them, literally with the mayor across from me.
Okay, but it's still?
I'll tell you what, we won't help juniors if something happens. Is that okay?
Probably wouldn't ask you.
I, I don't know what to say.
I just asked a question. Are we stepping on the toes of the village?
No.
Should we wait a little bit?
So I've repeatedly asked, involve supervisor Borst and Mayor, Mayor Rosen on the conversations. I always start my conversation and emails with, hey, you guys are in charge. If there's in any way that we're overstepping or pushing you to do something, I'll, I'll totally step back. However, I want them to know that we do support them. So they have reached-
I understand. I just, I've just asked a question. Is that possible that we could be? That's a yes or no, I guess?
No, it's not possible.
Okay, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, my apologies.
Maybe to mitigate any concerns, we could entertain moving forward, because this is in motion and you don't want to lose momentum, and we would vote on it, you know, in two weeks.
Right.
But maybe we ask for a letter from each resident or each business owner saying that they're interested in proceeding, and then one from the village and the committee saying we're also interested in the county's support in moving this forward. And then that would cover your concern, I think.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Instead of the verbal, we actually have a writing that the affected people do want tax dollars spent in this area, and the village is represented by the board, or however you wanted to find it.
I'll be honest, but all of that is part of the grant application, so if it, if it, they don't, if those don't come, I mean, those, we're in the process of already communicating with them and getting the correct verbiage in a letter.
And I would think we'd just take maybe an hour or two to draft a form letter, or maybe you could work with them, draft it.
Yeah, I could certainly-
And you just sign it, comes to the group.
That'd be perf, that'd be perfect.
To the mayor and the supervisor.
Yeah.
And then you could add that even as, you probably have to still fill out the sections of the form, but you can add it as objective evidence of support in your-
Yes, it's definitely gonna-
And I, I think that's a great idea. I would just point out, whenever we get a grant, it's not like the county is a different entity. It helps with every municipal, you know, it helps, it's part of the county. Every town is a member of the county, so when we get grant money, it helps.
Yes, so we will, I am planning on attending a meeting tomorrow evening with this, with the supervisors and the mayor, and bringing to-
That'd be great.
-the attention, the opportunity that this, that this is the documentation that I'm going to need for the grant application, because it does have a due date of March 31st. So that's sort of why this sort of came to the, to the table now, just because as we spoke to Empire State Development, they said it was a pretty good opportunity. There is current funding on the table that has not been used if we can get our application in by March 31st. So.
I can't imagine anyone saying, yeah, don't spend the money, we're not interested in looking at outcomes, so.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions for Jill? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, let's see.
Fair Housing Month.
Issue four, proclaiming April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second. Questions?
There's something going on in Del Lago. I believe it's next Saturday.
Is that the flyer?
Tuesday.
Is it the flyer or April?
There's a flyer that I, in April.
April 8th.
It's a housing services fair that was very well-attended last year.
Yeah, I went last year. It's really interesting if you get a chance, drop in.
So, and this is also something that we typically do to promote fair housing in the county, which is typically a requirement from a lot of the federal funding that we see, the CDBG fundings and such, have this requirement for us to demonstrate how we further fair housing in our community.
This is a law that was acted in 1968.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, it's different than that.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And, sure you want this? Motion, resolution to reappoint Jill Henry as Seneca County Fair Housing Officer.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any questions for Jill? I will say Jill and Joe are doing an outstanding job. Chairman and I have been working with them on a number of items, particularly around housing, Willard redevelopment, and also the Ovid rebuilding issue. And they have done, along with Dan, who's been very helpful, absolutely phenomenal work, very, very good. And I can't wait to share the Willard, what, the work that Joe has done, very, very good. So, that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? She carries. Uh, unfinished business?
We have one more.
Any new business?
No, we have one more.
Oh, did I miss?
Number six.
Infrastructure grant program.
Oh, like, oh, it's just, oh, it's not, okay, gotcha. I'm sorry, that's, that's the one.
That's the one.
Okay. That's, that's funny. Okay, my bad. Okay. Um, county resolution supporting the 2025 County Infrastructure Grant Program. This is the one where we had did the letter of intent. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there?
Second.
Second, second. Jill?
I guess, so this was another program, that's a new program being brought up by the state, pretty much. There, there's enough funding for almost every county to receive funding. It is either $500,000 if the community, if it doesn't involve housing, but you can get up to a million if you can demonstrate 10 housing units are also going to be involved. So, of course, with the housing units lost, and some of the work that the land bank is doing in Ovid, we're trying to spin that we can meet that 10 housing unit threshold and go for the million. And given the fact that the Village of Ovid has already got a water infrastructure improvement project in the works, the funding that they've already received will, can already be the match for this program. So again, we're moving forward, we're waiting to see what Empire State Development has to say about our letter of intent, whether or not they will support the 1 million versus the $500,000 application.
All right. This is a good one where it's not necessarily for Ovid, per se, but it goes to, like Supervisor Hayes, the 414 line, to make sure that that's properly sized, and also help towards the Red Project and Lowdy. Uh, did we do, did we do a motion? Did we get it first and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
That's funny.
That works, stay away.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So we went, new business, I didn't, Ernie, did you want to say any update on the IDA or anything you wanted to share? Airport, any update or?
Not that you haven't heard already.
Okay, and then, um.
I do have something I'd like to bring up.
Okay, go ahead.
Concerning the, the SCACOT meeting we went to.
Oh, yes.
Last week. And was pointed out the, the underfunding that we are getting as opposed to surrounding counties. I'd like to, uh.
And that's what?
I'd like to make a motion that we seek approval from New York State to raise our bed tax from 3% to 5%, which is still under.
So there's, I'm, I'm assuming that there's probably a motion like that been made in the past, we could just throw in there?
Yeah, I think the county attorney can handle that. We have done it multiple times in the last handful of years and unfortunately, we have not got cooperation from our representatives in Albany. They have passed other counties' increases and not ours.
I was going to say to Bob's point, I did attend the SCACOT committee and I was surprised, the other surrounding counties that have been approved and we haven't, it, it doesn't make sense, to me anyway, why.
I think we need to have a sit down, you know, with this committee and our two assemblymen and our state senator. And ask them to commit to support us.
Okay, so there's, I'll say there's two motions there. The first motion is to come up with a resolution to go from 3% to 5% as per surrounding counties. And actually Ontario County is really 6%, 3 and 3.
Yeah. Listen, if we can get it to 5.
Do I hear 7?
We went, we went for 4% for a number of years and then a couple of years ago, we increased it to 5%, so.
Are they reluctant to increase it because of the percentage or just because?
We don't know, I, we don't get an answer.
Well.
It's going to make a move.
One of our, one of our, a senator who formerly represented us would not support that because it was increasing taxes, even though it's the outside.
But she supported it for Wayne County, correct?
I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
But now Ontario County is looking to do something, so they may behind the, so.
There's a motion?
She's keeping to her pledge of not to raise taxes, that's all.
So I'll tell you what, we're in committee, what do y'all want to do, 5 or 6?
I'd do 6, save the effort.
Are you willing to amend your motion?
I'm willing to amend it, but.
Because there wasn't a second.
I would be comfortable with, with 5%. This would fund the activities that we currently do and this would also give us a bigger pot to dole out money.
Paid by visitors when they pay the bill.
That is correct.
I would do 6.
Oh, you didn't have a second, correct? All right, so you made a motion to 6%, I'll second the 6%.
I'm good with that.
Any questions? Alls in favor of a resolution, of directing county attorney to draft a resolution requesting that the bed tax go from 3% to 6%? Does that make sense or? Okay.
To the full board.
To the full board. Any other questions, comments?
They're the ones that collect it, not the homeowner, they're B and B collecting.
No, it's, it, it goes down to the.
But asked, I think he's saying.
There's a big deal and there's going to be some, there's going to be some confusion coming very shortly on the short-term rentals.
I think what you're saying is you want to take it to the whole board to get the full board's support, then request it from our legislators. Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
6, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, sounds good. Bob's point, in terms of new business, the SCACOT meeting was very, very useful. I would point out, any town that has short-term rentals, there was a law passed that's going to take effect in September of this year, which is going to involve the county and the towns working together on short-term rentals. I actually thought Jeff Shipley did a pretty good presentation on what that's going to mean and the information that's going to be collected. Any towns that have short-term rentals, I would, it behooves you to kind of look into those. And I did ask Jeff if he'd be willing to do a presentation for the full board, so.
Who's going to do the presentation?
I asked Jeff Shipley to do it. He, he had a good, he had a pretty good presentation on it in terms of how it's going to affect the county and the town and how that information gets collected, yeah.
It's a pretty important topic.
Yeah, I, like for Fayette, it's a huge topic, yeah. Okay, um, any other business? The one thing, Mr. Chairman, would it be possible, or maybe, sorry, if it's advisable, the update I did for the committee, can we include that in the minutes, so it's there?
Sure.
Is that, are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, does that require a motion or can we just? Okay, all right, anything else? Mr. Chairman, we stand adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to go on to our special board meeting we're having tonight. Get a roll call of the members.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one, one bit of old business or new business, whatever, still in the committee meeting is, I mentioned writing a letter to our representatives about trying to find funding for the hydrola treatment at Sheldrick. I'm wondering if I can get the authorization for our attorney to write up a resolution, so we'll have it for the next board meeting.
You want to quickly reconvene your committee then?
Yeah, something like that, is it all right with my committee if we write a letter to the DEC or to our representatives asking for the state to fund the DEC to treat Sheldrick Point Hydrola site? Call them, favor? Aye, thank you, gentlemen, uh, we got that, yeah, trendy. When we write up a letter encouraging the state to fund the DEC for the extended hydrola treatment at Sheldrick Point. Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good idea. Yeah, I got it, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. All right, now we're going back to the special board meeting we're going to have, you got a roll call of the members, please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Latini. Supervisor Borst. Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Schmider. Supervisor Cronawater.
Here.
Supervisor Reinhardt. Supervisor Partee. Supervisor Heisen. Supervisor Don Trout. Supervisor Endlow.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Tonight's moment of silence, I'd like to dedicate to recent passing of Supervisor Mooney. He passed away for the Town of Waterloo and anybody knew him, he was a good man, very heavily involved with the community and be heavily missed. Please join us for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. First up is number four, Public Works Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors authorizes the purchase of two 10-wheel dump trucks for the Highway Department as amended in committee.
Support.
Got a second, any discussion? Just for the record, this is an emergency purchase because of the condition of our trucks, so. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you.
All right, number five Supervisor Hayes.
Uh, thank you, Seneca County Water and Sewer Authority appointment.
Got a second, any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
It's a long time coming.
Damn right, probably shouldn't have said that, but.
Did.
That can's not going so far down the road anymore, Supervisor.
That's great, that's great.
Anyway, any new business? Any old business? Special Order Day Supervisor Reinhardt.
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everyone, thank you.